All right, I call this meeting the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Elrich.
President.
Councilmember Berry. Councilmember Clay. Councilmember Eldridge. Councilmember Simmons.
President.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Clay is traveling, so she won't be joining us. I assume the other two councilmembers will be here shortly. Are there any council comments or announcements? I would like to start off by reporting a meeting that we had with the committee of the county council this morning where the city's request for funding for the gym was voted favorably out of committee, basically by a three to zero vote. There were two conditions that were attached to that funding. One was that the members of the committee wanted to make sure that the city was not charging non-city residents more for recreation programs than city residents. This is something that members of the county council have brought up before and something that they wanted to see done since the county, they felt, was putting significant funding into this building. The second thing they wanted to do is spread the funding over two years, although they did agree to put $240,000 in the first year and $120,000 into the second year, so it was front-loaded. But they did want to spread it over more than one year. And so with that, those agreements, they sent it forward to the full county council. Members of the city council, I and other members of the city council, will be talking to other members of the county council over the next week or so to sort of ascertain where people are, but I feel very optimistic about the chances of this moving through. So I'm very pleased. Actually, I said Colleen wasn't going to be here, and here she is. So surprised. So anyway, we were very pleased by the response we got from the members of the committee. Committee was chaired by councilmember Steve Silverman. The other two members of the committee were Nancy Florine and Marilyn Praesner, so we're very appreciative of the support that they gave to our request for funding for the gym. Any other comments, Bruce?
And I was going to report on another committee, county council committee meeting that you and I, no, I attended. I can't remember.
You and I could go to meetings, but I think that when you say you went to three.
There were a couple of them last week.
You said you went to three last week.
Yeah. And it was, now I remember, it was the city manager and the community government liaison and myself. And it was a meeting of the Management Fiscal Policy Committee, and it was their discussion of our police rebate money for this year. And I think we got a fairly good result out of that meeting as well. The difficulty was that the amount for the city this year would have been lower, for next year would have been lower than this year, except the county executive put the same amount as this year in the '07 budget. The Management Fiscal Policy Committee had a recommendation to basically go with the lower amount. We were successful in arguing that they shouldn't do that. They agreed to go with the proposed amount in the county executive's budget. They are going to be looking at, as more information comes in and things get resolved, look at a possible payback of the excess, which we will have to deal with. But the good part of this is that they expressed an interest in looking into revisiting the formula and coming up with a formula that could be agreed upon by everybody and hold for a four-year term of the county council and the county executive, which I think is a very positive step toward our effort to deal with the new county exec and the new county council in revisiting all of the rebate formulas and follow-up on the recommendations made by the tasky committee and the need that we have felt to revisit those and have those discussions with the county. So there was an expressed interest by the chair of that committee in being involved in those discussions, and I think that will help move that along and get us where we need to be.
I just want to echo what the mayor said about how pleased we are that Steve Silverman and Nancy Florine and Marilyn Praesner have supported the request for funding for our gymnasium. We are now doing very well in terms of raising the money that's needed for us to move forward with that project so that the community can make a decision about whether that project can be embraced by the community. And I'm pleased that I could be a part of it this morning, and I want to thank the mayor for her leadership on that. She really went to the mat several times for this and has shown great perseverance, and I appreciate it, on behalf of all city residents and council members. So, thank you.
In turn, I'd like to also thank Joy, who was very supportive and was able to handle very well a question on the skate park, which came up in this context, as well as Howard Cohn, who was there and spoke for the Recreation Council. Teri?
I would just like to welcome the members of Ward Four who are here with us tonight to learn a little bit about how our government works, their government works.
Any other comments?
We had a couple of meetings.
And who are you without your tag tag out there?
Is my name tagged not out?
You guys were getting rid of me while I was gone. All right. Yes, well, less than 24 hours before I was due to get on my plane and after the flight had been ticketed and after I had personally paid for a side trip to go to New Orleans to see what was happening there, they pulled my travel.
Oh.
I'm still not over it. So, I didn't actually come to share that with you. We had two good meetings this last week in Ward Two, and one of them I didn't get to attend because it was at the same time as the council meeting, and that was the Forest Park meeting around crime issues and parking and traffic. And I understand that they had a great meeting with the police department, went very well, and got a lot of good ideas, and are going to proceed, I think, with talking with other people in the community and trying to decide what they want to do with permit parking and other crime prevention issues. And so I appreciate the police department's work with that, and all of the neighbors are very active in the Forest Park area and working very hard on this issue. And then in sort of the middle of the ward, there was a meeting around Elm and Lincoln Avenue intersection and Auburn and Elm Avenue intersection, and the city's planning department put together a couple of mock-ups of ways to do traffic calming in that area. And the neighbors have asked the city to put out some cones and some markings, and we're going to try out a couple of the different ideas that Alana Blanchard came up with for a couple weeks at a time so neighbors can kind of get a sense of how they work and what kind of impact they'll have. And then we'll come back again and have another discussion about that. And that went very well, so. And then upcoming, in the northernmost part of the ward, is a meeting related to traffic calming issues in the Long Branch Sligo area.
I'd like to thank Barb and her staff for putting together on Friday, May the 5th, the tour, excuse me, of the New Hampshire corridor area for a number of county notables such as Derek Berlage and Tom Perez and a couple of other legislators and city planning staff and also some other Tacoma Park council colleagues hopefully will also be part of that trip, the purpose of which is to give them a thorough understanding of the opportunities and challenges along that stretch of road with an eye towards hopefully making it part of the county's economic revitalization plan in the coming year and also a place that would be great for some affordable housing. And we hope to cooperate very closely with the county and also Prince George's County officials on that. The other announcement is, and I know that probably everybody's sick of hearing me mention this, but the pedestrian safety lights on New Hampshire Avenue still have not been illuminated after several attempts and discussions with the S.H.A. people who swore up and down that Pepco was on the job and soon we would have lights. The fact is, is that weeks have gone by since the last contact, and now the S.H.A. people have suddenly stopped returning my calls. So maybe there's a pattern here. And so I will continue to badger them. Maybe there's some new information available. Also, Erwin Mack had reported that one of the lights on University that had been illuminated suddenly went out without any knowledge of why, and he's looking into that and has reported it to the S.H.A. people. So hopefully, people will realize the danger that awaits people there and will stop fooling around with public safety and turn on the darn switch. Can't be that difficult.
One update I would like to give the council is on the Safe Tacoma program. It is going forward even without our tending, which is what you'd love to see with a community project that's spearheaded by residents' concerns about public safety around the Tacoma Metro. And the Safe Tacoma group is meeting tonight. They have had very good participation from both police departments, the Metropolitan Police Department on the D.C. side and from Tacoma Park Police Department on our side. They're still trying to get the Metro Transit Police to be fully involved in this development. What I don't have confirmation of, but I would like the council to know, is that Councilmember Fenty's office has requested the funding that would be necessary to match ours so that this program could get started. It is now working its way through the Judiciary Committee along with many other police projects. Ours would be a very small amount compared to the other large projects that there are requests for. So I'm encouraged. I'm sending a letter under my letterhead to say that, you know, this project is something that we in Tacoma Park support and we want to see the match found so that we can get right to work on this important business. And that letter will be part of the Judiciary Committee process, and hopefully we will have a favorable report very soon. So, there you go.
I wanted to add one more thing that I forgot. Yesterday evening, Howard Cohn hosted a meet and greet for Steve Silverman, who's running for county executive. And at that, there was a sort of a series of questions for the candidate, and one of the questions I asked him was about the rebate issue. And he did commit that if he were elected, he would put together a group of municipalities and county staff who would take a look at this, including looking at the issue of expanding the number of things that are included in the formula as well as looking at the kinds of things, the kind of calculations and the way the formula was put together, which I think is certainly, it's the beginning of a good commitment. So pleased to hear that, and I'm sure there will be opportunities to ask the other candidate, I'd like it to address the same thing, and I will report on the council what I hear in that respect. Anything else? All right. We have in front of us minutes from three meetings, March 27th, April 3rd, and April 10th. Does someone want to move adoption of the minutes?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second and in discussion. All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes are adopted. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is the time that's set aside for comments on items that are not on our regular meeting agenda. If you have a comment on something that's not on the regular meeting agenda, we would ask if you would save your comments until we get to that item. If you have comments on work session items or on any other topic, this would be the appropriate time to make those comments.
My name is Gene Herman. I live at 511 New York Avenue. And I am speaking to you tonight to request your support in allowing the Tacoma Park Community Band to continue to use the Hefner Community Center as a practice site. The Tacoma Park Community Band was founded 31 years ago by Tacoma Park resident Roy Corbin. Mr. Corbin perceived the need in the Tacoma Park community for a city band that would provide music for municipal, patriotic, and other local events. The city council in 1975 felt that the time and concept were right and encouraged the group to fill the need. At inception, the band was directed by Mr. Corbin and sponsored jointly by Dale Music, the Tacoma Park Recreation Department, and the Tacoma Park Junior High School Community School Coordinator, Mr. Basil Calandros. Later, the city became the sole sponsor. Over the years, the band has performed for a variety of venues, both for the city and the surrounding communities. Our annual concert prior to the fireworks has been part of the city's Fourth of July celebration since the 1970s. Practice is the key to gaining both accuracy and variety for a musical ensemble. Initially, under the auspices of the Tacoma Park Recreation Department, the band was allowed to rehearse Monday evenings in the music room of the Tacoma Park Junior High School, Community School. And this continued until the school was torn down prior to the construction of the new Tacoma Park Intermediate School facility. At that time, the band was offered the Hefner Community Center building as a new practice site. This facility has served the needs of the band well every Monday night for the past 10 years. Since the band has been, had appreciative and responsible leadership and membership, our weekly use of the facility has never been a problem for the city. We ask your support in allowing the Hefner Community Center to continue to be available as the practice site for the Tacoma Park Community Band on Monday night. We will work with you in any way to make this request as effortless for the city as possible. Your support of this request will make it possible for the band to continue to provide cost-free music for our Tacoma Park constituents as well as worthy groups in the wider local community. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is, my name is Mr. Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. I'd like to give you an update on how things are going with my friend running for senate. We had a great house party up there at Wally Melinkoff's, up there on Maple Avenue. We had a great discussion on the, on everything from the death penalty on down to the ICC and on to, and how we need a purple line, and how we need to lower crime, and how we need to be aware of the low income and the, and how we need to keep affordable housing in our, in our state, in our county, in our city. And yes, on the 2nd of May, we're going to be having Jazz for Justice. We're going to be having a discussion on the criminal justice system, and we're going to be having jazz music, and we're going to be having a lot of people coming in there. And my friend Jamie Raskin, who is running for state senate, is going to be there to speak on a lot to do with the death penalty and, you know, criminal justice issues and Jasper Justice is coming on the 2nd. Also, on the 8th of May, we are going to be having, that whole weekend, we're going, starting the 6th on a Saturday, we're going to be having a march from the death house to the courthouse, because the 8th is Mr. Evans's appeal for his execution by the state of Maryland, which we are opposed to. We are going to be having a walk going from Baltimore, the supermax, to Annapolis, to the Court of Appeals. And the first night, they're going to be stopping, I believe, in Glen Burnie. The second night will be in this town of Arnold, which is four and a half miles away from the courthouse. And that Monday will be converging on the Court of Appeals. And we need as many people to be aware of this as possible to be there May 8th, and possibly on the 6th to take part in any part of the walk they can. And also, also Tacoma Park is a very active community, I notice. We've got two people in our, in our, in our city council, running for county council. We've got Mark Eldridge running for county council, and we've got Joy Austin Lane running for county council also. We also got, what's her name, Heather Maziers running for.
Mazier.
Mazier, running for state delegate. And we also got Jamie Raskin running for state senate. And it's, and we may have a lot of representation from our city of Tacoma Park and our state and our county and our local government. And also, I am glad to see a lot, some more people in our audience taking interest in what our government is about and learning about our government, because we cannot just absently vote people in and expect them blindly to do something and not get the job done. It'd be like handing me the keys to a bus and say, drive this to New York or Boston. I can't see what I'm doing. I would have to be directed, coached, and everything else. And it's the same thing. We cannot just blindly expect our government to do our wish if we are not going to be able to take part in learning about our government and coming down here to our city hall and doing something and sitting and learning about what the issues are and having an opinion on what our council members should be doing.
Can you wrap it up, then?
Yes, and I would like, I think we should ask everybody to come down here and take part and learn about our government and do for our government and our city. Thank you very much. And hope to see you out at these events. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Hi, I'm Eileen Sovek, and I'm here tonight in my role as co-president of the Long Branch Sligo Citizen Association. We have an issue that's really been buzzing around on the email listservs, and we've talked about it in our executive group, but we thought that we'd, we'd put it before the council and then work to coordinate with the police department and the fire department. But it has to do with some safety issues at Becca Lily Park, which is, you know, a lovely gem of a park, which is between Councilman Berry's Ward and Councilman Clay's Ward, but it's very isolated. And there were several incidents over the last few weeks involving people hanging out and building fires. There were some arsons, which, before the rain, you know, was really of concern. And I think a recurrent problem in Becca Lily Park is that it is under the auspices of the park police. And so there's some coordination issues between the city and the fire department, the police department, and the parks, the parks department. And we want to try to work with, with both the city and the county to figure out exactly what is the right response for citizens. And we have one of our neighbors here who was, who witnessed some of these incidents, who can talk about it a little bit more. We don't want to spend a huge amount of time, you guys have a full agenda, but I think it's one of those, one of those issues that kind of falls through the cracks, but it, it's hard, you know, it's at the end, the entrance to the park from, from my side of the neighborhood is at the end of a dead-end street. There was an incident on that street this morning. And it's just really not, not, there's not a lot of traffic, which is good and for, in terms of pedestrian safety for kids going to the park, but bad in terms of kind of sheltering other people from view when they're, when they're up to no good. But especially in light of the arsons, we just wanted to bring it to the council's attention. So I'm going to ask Gabe to speak about it a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Hi, I'm Gabe Hutter, and I live at the bottom of Central Avenue. And my house overlooks Becca Lily Playground, and I stay at home with my young son, and so I have a bird's eye view of whatever goes on in the park. And we've had a total of three arson incidents between March, the weekend of March 19th and most recently April 9th. The first one where the arson really took hold, where part of the playground equipment was actually burned, was not witnessed, but we saw the results the next day. Since then, the other two attempts, I actually saw myself from my window, and in each case it was, it was teenage boys, about 14 to 15 years old. Originally, there were three of them. The second incident, there were only two. And in each case, I, you know, I went out and I called down to them and, and they stopped the burning and left. And in each case, I called the park police. The second time around, I actually followed the boys out of the park because I felt like, well, okay, so then the fire is out now, but these kids are going to disappear and then they'll come back, and I'd like to know where they live. But it was a Sunday, and I couldn't get a park police officer down before I lost track of the boys. They, you know, they split up and then they started running. I followed one of them for about 20 minutes, but I could not get, you know, you know, on my cellphone, but it was too much time before the park police came down. And that day, the police officer who then finally came told me there were only four park police officers on duty for all of Montgomery County. This was a Sunday afternoon. And I guess, as Eileen said, you know, the park, I mean, it's actually a very popular park, as Doug will attest. It is a little secluded, and there are just these times of day which are sort of dead spots. And it's generally, I've seen these kids between, you know, 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock on weekdays hang out and, and at least one of those arson incidents actually took place at around that time. So I guess the, you know, we will, we're writing a letter right now to the, to the park police to get their attention to it. I haven't gotten the sense that they've put all these reports together and see a pattern, but we'd like to draw their attention to it, and hopefully they can put some more attention to, to that park. But, you know, it would be helpful also to get some support from the city, because the park is not really in isolation there. I mean, it's the area, it's sort of, you know, the area on Lower Central, as Eileen mentioned, is also isolated. And this morning, an abandoned car was cannibalized in broad daylight. First, the car was dropped off during the night, and I noticed it on my morning run. And a friend and I went out running for half an hour, but, you know, I thought, well, maybe it's just somebody visiting. When we came back a half hour later, another car left the street, and we went down and we saw that all the tires had been removed from, from the car that had been left there. And so between 6:15 and, you know, 6:20 or so, these guys went to work. And, you know, these are not, these are not related. I mean, the arson is really, it's these teenage boys, but it's just, it just makes us all feel kind of like, you know, we're at the bottom of this neighborhood, we're not too far from Langley Park in New Hampshire, and it's sort of an attractive spot, I think, for people wanting to have a little quiet time and do some quiet business that, that no one will be observing. And, you know, it just makes us feel a little bit unsafe, and we're not sure exactly what to do. If it's in the park, you know, the park police says, call us, but then will they ever come?
Appreciate your bringing it to us. I think we can, we can provide some intervention with the park police. We should be able to do that. And hopefully, we can do some crackdowns also on abandoned cars. And I'm sure Councilmember Clay will work with you in sort of making sure that the connections all get made between you all and our police department and our city administration, because that does sound like a very dangerous situation.
I should add that. Did you ever call the park police about the incidents?
For the arsons, no. I only got in touch with the park police. We were planning to CC the Tacoma Park Police and our communication with the park police. I should add that this morning, the Tacoma Park Police was on the job very quickly and very effectively. So that was very, that was very encouraging to see.
Can I just ask that the city manager think about ways that we might put those boys in touch with possibly the right services? I don't know that, I know arson is sometimes associated with abuse, and so if we could just make sure that they are getting the appropriate services instead of just joining the roles of the juvenile justice system, that would be great. I don't know if our victim services coordinator could, could look into that or if we need to engage the county.
I also wonder if there's an opportunity for a memorandum of understanding between the city of Tacoma Park and the park police so that we can provide more effective policing in those parks.
We actually do have a memorandum of understanding with them, but it doesn't cover that kind of thing, and so it sounds like that should be the subject of some discussion. I was actually participated, as Councilmember Berry did, with some discussions about problems in the park in his ward, and they told us the same thing. The park police is very, very understaffed. Some of the problems in Councilmember Berry's ward were the result of the same thing. They have very few park police covering huge numbers of parks spread out all over the county.
This has been an issue in Ward Four also, and I wonder if it wouldn't behooves to put something on the agenda to discuss that.
I think the problem with the other park was resolved in part by a understanding between the Tacoma Park Police and the park police, where in these matters, because of the thin dispersment of the park police throughout the area, that Tacoma Park Police would step up and be the first responders. Both would be notified about the incident, but in order to increase the response time, it would be the Tacoma Park Police that would come. And it may be possible then to have that arrangement extended into this other park, simply because, as we know, especially at peak times, the response time is simply unacceptable for the park police, whereas we can be there fairly quickly. And as long as everyone understands that in our jurisdiction. as everyone understands that in our jurisdiction, this, this would be the protocol, then I think we'll be well-served, better served by that arrangement.
Yeah, we certainly can follow up on that. I think that would be a good thing to do. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Hi, Mark Hessel, on behalf of a variety of landlords in Tacoma Park. Want to address this evening a proposal that was voted on, I believe, by the council last week and is coming up again tonight, which is this pilot program, which at first blush struck me as a very good and decent way to maintain affordable housing in Tacoma Park. But the more I thought about the basic premise of it, I realized that you're saying that a nonprofit is going to come in rehabilitate some apartment buildings. And that when they're done with that, they can't afford to make, to cover their expenses. So Tacoma Park is going to give it, I think it's over $100,000 over the next 10 years, to help them cover their expenses. And if the staff's recommendations on rent stabilization are followed, they'll also be exempted from rent control. What makes the council think that if a nonprofit needs the city's help to make ends meet as a landlord, that a for-profit landlord can do it magically? It highlights, first of all, I think it's very hypocritical of the city of Tacoma Park to help a nonprofit in that situation, because they can't make ends meet, and still subject landlords, for-profit landlords, to rent control. What this really highlights is that the numbers don't add up. I mean, I represent a large number of landlords. No one from the city's ever come to me to ask, what are the real economics of being a landlord in Tacoma Park? But this program highlights the fact that you can't make ends meet. It's very difficult in the minimum amount of time, or minimal amount of time allotted, to address proposals, because frankly, there's not very much solid to address yet. But a number of the proposals that you've got, the surcharges for property taxes and utilities, increasing the annual adjustment to 100% of CPI, they don't address the basic inequity that's there now that says landlords can't make ends meet. All they will do is slow the rate at which landlords fall further and further and further behind. If you look at the handout tonight, which is really a recompilation of earlier handouts, the fact is that Tacoma Park has one of, if not the most, one of the most restrictive sets of rules on rent stabilization in the country. Now, you may think it's a good idea, but the economics don't support it. There would have been more landlords here to speak tonight, but one of my numbers, one of the people I deal with, had called the city and we recognized this was by mistake. Somebody told them it wasn't going to be a public comment period tonight. Maybe they can get them back out next week. But the city really needs to do something about this, because you're killing the goose that laid the golden egg. You're going to end up with very few rental units. And I've spoken to-
Can you wind up?
Yes, I can. I've spoken with a number of landlords. There are quite a few landlords in the city that are willing to stop renting. For instance, to say July and August, or August, we'll get rid of month-to-month tenants, because who wants to pay that electric bill for the month of August? And the city will start to see-
Can you wind up?
Yes. The city will start to see that landlords are serious. They can't make ends meet.
Thank you. Just, just to clarify, the city did not propose to exempt the nonprofits from rent stabilization.
Good evening. My name is Michael Weiner. I am general counsel for Southern Management Corporation. And I too am here to speak about the modification, the recommended modifications to the Rent Stabilization Act. Sometime in 1986, since 1986, Southern Management has owned and operated the Park Ritchie Apartments. It's 189-unit building over here on Maple Avenue. And we've put quite a lot of money and quite a lot of time into the property. Over the course of time, Park Ritchie has been faced with the constraints of the Rent Stabilization Act. As you know, the act currently restricts the amount of rent that a landlord can charge and arbitrarily limits rent increases to 70% of CPI. Over time, these limitations have now made it so we can no longer make a profit. We are now operating at a loss. Based on our vast experience, and we are one of the largest landlords in the country, a typical multifamily property operates at 50% to 60% of gross income before capital expenditures and debt services. This affords the owner an opportunity to make a reasonable profit. However, due to the constraints of the act, Park Ritchie basically is operating at approximately, its operating costs are basically 80% of gross income, which results in this loss. And we're in the midst of one of the biggest real estate booms in the history of our country. And it's no coincidence that the only property we operate in the city of Tacoma Park is the only property that we operate at a loss. Therefore, unless substantial changes are made to the act, which permits us to increase our rents to at least market levels, we're going to have to do something drastic, because we can no longer afford to operate at a loss. Now, as Mr. Hessel just mentioned, various modifications are being considered by the staff and the council to the act. And we understand the following things are being considered. Units will be exempt if the owner receives a government subsidy. Units may be exempt if the owner's rented low-income tenants, and he mentioned this pilot program. Newly constructed units may be exempt for a certain period of time. Units leased to tenants receiving government subsidies may be exempt. A unit owned by a person who does not own any rental units in Tacoma Park would no longer be exempt. Annual increases would be 100% rather than 70% of CPI. Perhaps there would be some energy or property tax surcharge that would be permitted. And perhaps, when a tenant voluntarily moves out, the landlord would be allowed to increase the rent to certain levels, which would not bring it back to market rent. Well, as Mr. Hessel mentioned, none of this is going to help us, because we're an existing landlord that's already poured a fortune into our building. So what are we supposed to do? Well, I'll tell you what, I'm not going to tell you what we're supposed to do. I'm going to tell you three options that we're considering. We might do one of them. We might do all of them. We might convert to condominiums. We've noticed a lot of landlords converting to condominiums lately. And quite frankly, under the current law, it's the only way we might be able to make a profit. What else might we do? We might vacate and close Park Ritchie Apartments. The building's profit margins have been less than 2% since calendar year 2001. And as I said, the last two years, we're operating at a loss. This is a direct result of the act. Our accountant's advised us it might be more beneficial to us to close down the building. And we're considering doing that. At this point in time, 138 out of 189 apartments in this building are on month-to-month tenancies, which provides us the opportunity to issue 15-day notices at any time.
Can you wind up?
I'm getting there. The last option, and I will tell you this, we've already instructed our attorneys to paralegal action to challenge the act. We feel it violates the Constitution, the Maryland Declaration of Rights, and other items. We just can't continue to operate the building at a loss. We feel we're a good corporate citizen. We think we've worked with the city since 1986 to provide a good alternative and a good, a good living environment for residents. But we need some relief. Make no mistake about it, we're serious that we're going to pursue one or all of these options. If we file suit and litigate the case, we're going to be filing suit for damages in excess of $20 million plus cost of the building. We need some relief from the city. And I would say an increase of about 25% would get us back to where we ought to be, just to make a reasonable profit. But we're not going to continue to operate at a loss. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiner, I believe that we heard, this council heard previously in talking about the rent stabilization law in general, that the Park Ritchie Apartments does not use the relief, ask for relief under the current law. Is that so? And if not, why not?
We don't believe we're going to be, we think it would be futile. We do not believe we'd get the kind of relief that we need to make a profit.
That's interesting.
That's, that's our, that's our opinion.
So rather than, than try, you just will assume that, that it wouldn't be sufficient?
It's not going to be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name's Julie Siegel. I live on Goody Avenue in Ward Three. I'm here as a member of the Tacoma Park Community Band, which, as you know, is a diverse musical group sponsored by the city that welcomes participants of all skill levels from throughout the community. And I'd ask if all the band members who are present tonight could just give us a show of hands. And all of those, and all of those who are Tacoma Park residents, could you keep your hands raised? I just want to give you an idea of how diverse we are and how much we do unify the community. I want to echo Mr. Herman's comments from before. As he said, we perform at a variety of civic organizations, nursing homes, hospitals, churches, and at community events such as the Fourth of July and Martin Luther King Day festivities here in Tacoma Park. In fact, we had a performance yesterday at the Washington Home in Northwest DC. We do not charge, or apparently, on very rare occasions, we do charge. A community band, especially one that welcomes all comers, needs to rehearse regularly, weekly, to be prepared to perform in public. That means that we need a consistent place in which to rehearse on a consistent schedule. Heffner Community Center has been our home on Monday nights for several years. It's a good fit for us, because it's out of the way. We don't disturb other groups, such as the council. And presumably, that facility is in less demand than space in the new community center. So what's the cost to the city and what's the benefit? We don't ask the city to pay for any of our tangible costs. Sheet music, stands, instruments, uniforms, transportation, refreshments at our holiday party. The city pays the overhead costs for providing us a place to rehearse two hours a week and storing our filing cabinet of music. That's it. According to the resolution that the council passed last year unanimously, the band helps unify Tacoma Park's diverse population, supports the city by performing at community events, represents Tacoma Park throughout the community, and enriches our community. I think all those things are true. Tacoma Park thinks of itself as a community that supports the arts. What other city around the area has a poet laureate? It should be a community that can afford a small overhead cost for performing arts. So I hope that we'll be able to continue to use the Heffner Center on a regular basis, as we've been doing. After reading the work session, background piece for tonight, I was a little confused about whether the issue is about access or it's about money. Or does the council, in fact, see them as inextricably linked?
Can you wind up?
Yes. We thought those, the first issue on money had been resolved, and now we were just talking about access. But if, if the bottom line is a question of cost, I think we'd be happy to work with you to address that. And surely, there's some way, if we, if the city does want to have a band, that we can work to have weekly access. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will have further discussion of this. Anyone else?
My name is Barry Workley. I am president of Vista Management Company. We have managed and owned properties in Tacoma Park since the early 1960s. I spoke, I think, a couple months ago on the issue of rent stabilization. I must again tell you, I just don't get it. I don't get it. I don't know why the city council doesn't follow either Montgomery County or District Columbia in its attempt to make everybody happy and go through the deregulation of rent stabilization through a vacancy de-control program or go to a voluntary rent control program. I understand the affordable housing issue. Montgomery County faces it. District Columbia faces it. Tacoma Park faces it. I can't speak for the other landlord, my colleague, who spoke earlier. We all make as much money as we used to, but we still make money. I just don't understand why the city council doesn't take a road to de-control the vacancies, so that those people who wish to come into Tacoma Park and rent new would be part of the free enterprise system. If their landlord is not going to get that new rent, how long do you think he's going to stay with a vacant unit? If he's halfway intelligent, he can stay with it too long. So rent's going to come down on that market. You protected those who are there. You want to go to 100% of the CPI, 70%? That's your decision. I don't think any of us are naive to think you're going to get rid of the Rent Stabilization Act altogether. So I'd just like to hear why you're not considering, or are you considering, the programs that were offered by the other jurisdictions? And that is the vacancy de-control. And one more question I'd like to know. When does this thing come to a head? When do you all make a vote on the issue, issue of rent stabilization? Thank you. When do you?
Well, I can, I can tell you the, the remaining steps of the process. There is a discussion this evening, and there will probably be another discussion of concepts that the staff has brought to us. Then based on the council's discussion of the concepts, the staff will then write legislative language, which will probably be brought to the council later this summer.
By the summer, you mean June, July, August?
Not August. We will be in recess in August. It'll be before August.
So you'll make a decision before August?
I hope so.
Okay, thank you.
I can tell you when I can schedule it. I can't tell you when the council will make a decision.
Just one, is the city council the last word?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is.
And vacancy de-control is one of the considerations we will be discussing this evening.
Excellent. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm going to shift gears here, if it's okay.
Okay.
I'm going to go back to-
Do you want to identify yourself, Nellie?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry. Nellie Moxley of Tacoma Park, Pinecrest Citizens Association President. I'm going to go back a little bit here to one of the comments that was made about the juveniles in the parks. Now, we have a wonderful fire department. I think that the juveniles should be given a chance to go through a program through Mr. Jarboe at the fire department. Years ago, we had a program like this in DC, and it works really wonders. They need to be shown exactly how, why, and what's the safety issues here. And if you take them, rather than throwing them into jail and juvenile and so on and so on, the system's not going to work. It's not going to stop them. They're going to come right back out and get bigger and better. And they'll learn from all the ones that's in there already. So it would be a good idea. That's one of the shifting of gears. The other one is the fact that Southern Management, okay, so he vacated the premises. That's just fine. Hallelujah. And good riddance. Years and years ago, when my children were babies, before I came to Tacoma Park, DC, which is where I was for a lot of years before I came here, Southern Management is really out for nothing but the money that's in his hand. He's going to do nothing for his people, nor is he going to serve anything. I sort of got bumped out two or three different times, because I didn't make enough money on three jobs to keep their little finances going. So be careful of this guy and watch him. He's young, he's dumb, and he wants that money. So that's the other issue. So I'll go to the next issue. Some of them I don't understand here, but we'll get to it when you get to it. The one other thing, don't distract me. I have enough problems. On the electricity thing, I would suggest, because of some of the things that I've already found out down in the district and what's going on out here, to stay with Pepco, straight with Pepco. Don't go any other direction. They're going up 72%, and they're going to cut it in different directions. Stay with them straight out. And be careful with any other route. And I see you are going to be, and you're going to review it very good. So I'm getting ahead of it, and I want you to understand I'm right there with you.
You're talking about the municipal aggregation?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Because they've really got some things in, in the works here that we could suffer immensely if we went anywhere else. One other thing is, I heard you mention Mr. Silverman, okay? He is a nice person personally. He's for development. Think about that.
Okay, I just-
And that's all I'm going to say on that.
I wasn't endorsing Mr. Silverman. I was reporting on a, on a discussion, question-and-answer session with him, as I will with any other of the county executive candidates that I happened to be able to ask that question about rebates. Anyone else? I, Mr. Lovelace reminded me there was another thing that I forgot to mention, which was that there is a candidate's forum for candidates running for District 20 offices, Legislative District, Senator and House of Delegates, which is on Thursday night at Christ Congregational Church on Colesville Avenue. I don't know exactly, Colesville Road. I don't know exactly what the, what the address is, but I believe it's-
Right before the Beltway.
Right before the Beltway, yes. But it's the first down-county District 20 candidates' debate. And it would be interesting to people who are interested in that. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Yulissil. I live at 108 Rich Avenue in Silver Spring, Tacoma Park area. Okay, my concern about the meeting that we used to have at Heffner Park, and I heard that you was going to be charging just to have the Riches Citizens Association meeting. And I thought that bill was put there, well, we always had the meeting there, and didn't have to pay. So I don't know why they want to charge now. Maybe somebody can answer that. I don't know. But we always have had the meeting there, and once every other month. And now they want to charge us to use the bill just for the meeting. I can see you charging if we have some kind of function or something. But for the Riches Citizens Association meeting, I don't understand.
I, I don't think we were talking about charging citizens' associations, but I'm-
Yes, they are.
For Heffner? Okay, well, I, we'll, we'll discuss that some more this evening.
Oh, you will.
And, and I think that's the issue- And, and I think that's the issue that's going to be brought up and discussed this evening, so I hope you can stay and, and-
Now, we don't have no money now. I'm telling you.
Right, right. Understand. I'm just saying, I hope you'll be able to stay this, this evening and, and, and listen to the discussion, because then we should be able to give you an answer to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak? Yes.
My name is Erwin Deucher. I'm, I'm a citizen of a suburb of Tacoma Park. I come from Washington DC, and I play in your band, and I've been playing in it for 10 years. It's sort of like a guest worker here, and I've grown to love your city because of that. We play, as you heard before, at whatever public events the, the city needs a band for, which apparently are frequent and come every year. It's been great fun, and we love it, but like the lady who was here right before me, we don't have any money. And we don't charge for what, when we play, and most of the, most of our playing is for the city here, though we do play for nursing homes and such outside. I just want to say that you're providing a service that's much appreciated by those of us even who don't vote here and don't vote in, in your Tacoma Park, but, but we do like your city, and we do appreciate what you've done, and we try our best, play our best for Tacoma Park whenever it needs it, and I hope you'll help us. Without a place to rehearse and without any money, our 30-year history of service is, is in grave danger. But we appreciate you giving it serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Can I say one thing to the community band members? I appreciate you coming tonight. I know that this is your rehearsal night, so I hope you will go, go forth and practice. The discussion that the council will have is, is something that will be ongoing, and I hope that we can get some things resolved tonight, but I, I don't want your practices disrupted. And thank you for your many years of service.
Thank you all. And, and Councilmember Siemens tells me that there's also a number of members of the Richie Citizens Association here this evening, and we welcome you also. Let's move on now to the city manager's report.
I have a number of items in the interest of time. I'll try to go through those rather quickly. In regard to the community center project, the council may recall that we had previously obtained quotes from TRG Construction to do some roof repairs, and the council had authorized replacement of the library roof and a section of the old municipal building roof. As I mentioned before, we had gotten proposals for several other roof areas, including over the auditorium and the Director of Public Works, and her staff have reviewed those. At this juncture, it's her recommendation that we accept a portion of that quote from TRG Construction. It's an area that we and staff refer to as the fishbowl. If you're facing the building from Maple Avenue, it's off the plaza area, and it's the area that overhangs where the stairwell goes down to the police department. The entrance from that is from the side of the building, if you know where I'm talking about. When we poured the concrete slab there, which was something the city had done in lieu of pavers, as the council may recall, it did create some drainage issues. We asked TRG to look at that, and Daryl Braithwaite has reviewed that. The cost is fairly nominal. It's about $3,200, and I would like to proceed with having TRG Construction do that work. In terms of the remaining sections of the old municipal building roof, Ms. Braithwaite has indicated to me that she feels that we can probably get by with some repairs, which will be in the range of $5,000 to $10,000. Probably in approximately 10 years, however, we will need to replace those roofs, so it's sort of a, you know, temporary fix. She thinks that will be sufficient for approximately 10 years, but the city does need to start setting aside funding eventually for the replacement of the roofs in those additional areas.
And what was the price for TRG to give him for that repair?
It was approximately $60,000, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you.
And that fishbowl you referred to, is that the stairway, is that the stairway that comes up on the right side of the building, or are you talking between, kind of over more toward the learning center?
It's on the right side of the building. If you're coming in-
It's that independent stairway that has the ladder up?
That is correct, yeah. If you're coming in, it's basically the area where the police department, it is a secured area where the police department will bring in prisoners, more towards the Grand Avenue side.
Where there were flooding problems.
That is correct. So unless there's any opposition by the council, I'll go ahead and notify TRG Construction to proceed with that work, as was the case with the other roof repairs. We're sort of doing it under the auspices of the community center contract, but it will be a general fund expense.
I have a question about that. I've noticed that the library roof has been attended to. It looks much better. The entire structure around there looks like it's been reinforced, so I appreciate the job that was done there. I'm comfortable with the plan to proceed on the right side of the building. Can you tell me, in your professional opinion, about the patching that would, would take place to the roof? Does that seem like the most cost-effective thing for the city to do, or as we further explore doing the gym, would it make sense for us to be talking about adding that into the, the construction project there?
Ms. Braithwaite is here. Obviously, she's much more of a roof expert than I am, so I'll defer to her.
Well, I can just say that it's a, it will be traditional methods that'll be used to do the patch, and it's done routinely on buildings to extend roof life. From the analysis that we did, and also we've had TRG spokes and another roofing consultant in before them to do an analysis of the roof, and everybody's identified where the faults are in those two roof structures that are remaining. It's not an overall failure of the roof surface, nor do we have a lot of widespread problems. They're fairly localized, and we feel like we can address it with a, a patch, which will be using the similar materials that are on the roof now. It's just an overlay that will be hot melted down to the surface and will cover over the existing surface. It's hard to know with either those cases what the ultimate cause of the roof failure was. I mean, clearly there was some problem in the original overlay that had some bubbling and some, you know, there were some areas there that weren't sealed and smooth, but with the construction and all the activity that's gone on in that roof, it's just exacerbated a weak situation. So I feel fairly confident that, that we can do the work with our in-house expertise. We've done roof work before, and that will, it'll hold. It's just not a, a permanent solution. It's not a 30-year solution. It could easily go beyond 10 years, but I feel safe saying it's a 10-year solution. So it just extends your time and allows you a little more time to, you know, fund a roof repair, a roof replacement.
And how much does it cost to do this?
To do the patching? I would say $5,000 to $10,000. I think much closer to $5,000. Some of it depends on if there's unknown factors that we get into once they get up there and really start doing the work.
Okay.
But we generally use temporary labor. We have an in-house staff person that has roofing experience, so he knows what he's doing. We buy the materials from a roof center, and we just do the job.
What was the $60,000 figure about?
That was the, the price we received from TRG Construction. Councilmember Austin Lane to actually totally replace those roofs, and Ms. Braithwaite was stressed with her opinion.
It's the third floor roof and the council's chamber roof, those two roofs.
So it sounds like what you're recommending, Daryl, is that we do this patching, which you believe will take care of the isolated weak spots in the roof and will extend the roof's life until we need to completely redo the roof.
As well as continued maintenance that we have, you know, planned for that surface where you re-code it and make sure any kind of potential problems are addressed with sooner rather than later.
I would certainly go with the city manager's recommendation. It's $10,000. It's supposed to be good for 10 years as opposed to $60,000 right now that would give us, yeah, I think it seems reasonable.
Yeah. I hate to, to question other people's judgment, because I certainly don't have a lot of roofing experience, but $10,000 instead of $60,000, to me, doesn't seem like the, the right direction to go in. The, the community center is being constructed right now. In 10 years, we will still be paying off the bonds that we've used to construct it, and I would think that the $60,000 investment that we make in making it a more complete, entirely usable building would actually be money well spent. So, you know, I, not trying to persuade the council of this, at this time, I, I agree that the city manager's professional opinion needs to be followed, but I would just say that if it was $10,000 or $300,000, that kind of magnitude of difference would matter to me. But $10,000 versus $60,000, to me, seems quite close, and possibly we might be getting more bang for our buck with going with the $60,000 new roof.
Yeah, and Ms. Braithwaite and I kind of went back and forth on that ultimately. I think she certainly knows more about roofs than I do. Obviously, one of the advantages, you know, spending the additional $50,000 to $55,000, is you know that all your roofs were basically put on, you know, within a relatively short timeframe, and, and you have some assurance, I guess, in terms of the timeframe for which those would last. You know, from a financial standpoint, I'm not uncomfortable that we probably have sufficient reserves if the council, you know, kind of opts for the additional $50,000 to $55,000. I think certainly Cinemark, the roofing company that is doing work for TRG Construction, I think they've done an excellent job. I don't know if Ms. Braithwaite wants to say anything else, but truthfully, it's half a dozen or one or the other.
Right. I share your, your concern, and I've spent a lot of time thinking about it as well. I really, given a very conservative estimate, I think we'll be much closer to $5,000 than $10,000, and not that that may make enough difference to you. The other thing that is a concern to me as a person that manages budgets is if we go ahead and replace the roof at this point for the entire rest of the facility, you will then have in 20 to 30 years a need to re-roof that entire facility. You won't have staged and sort of taken off, you know, sections of it, so you know, that what I'm saying is in 10 to 15 years, we know we're going to have to do the third floor roof and the council chamber roof. But we'll still have 20 more years that the other parts of the new building, the library roof, you know, won't have to be done. So it, it helps, I think, in terms of financing those expensive replacements in the future, rather than having the entire roof surface failing at the same time. That's just another, another point of consideration.
May I suggest to the council that since we're running about half an hour behind, and we haven't started our meeting yet, that maybe we proceed to make a decision on this. It, it sounds, you know, I would be happy to go with the city manager's and with the Public Works Director's recommendation, unless somebody has a, a serious concern about that. While respecting the point that Joy's brought up, I think that I'd be willing to go with the recommendation. Unless there's-
Just a few other quick items. I did want to mention to the council that as we have throughout the community center construction, there will be more staff having to move as a result of construction. The trailer that is currently occupied by the recreation staff that is right in front of the building will need to be vacated and moved. There is an area on that face of the building where basically TRG has to go in and do some work, and they need unimpeded access. We had some of the police department folks, as you may recall, there's some sewage flooding remediation. They've been currently occupying the trailer that is more on the Grand Avenue side. That work is going to need to be delayed somewhat. They will move back into the police department. The recreation staff will be moving into their trailer for the duration of the project, and then we'll start that work. But you will see some of the recreation staff basically being relocated this week so that work can proceed. As the council is aware, there are a number of proposed change orders that will be the subject of mediation, as I mentioned last week. That mediation session will take place in mid-May. Over the course of the next few weeks, particularly for Nita George and I, we'll be working with Robert Cox, our attorney, to basically prepare for that mediation. So that will be taking, obviously taking some staff time. As the mayor and other council members had mentioned, the county council committee has recommended some funding for the gym, proposed gym project. It is my understanding that that funding is intended to be a match to the state bond bill funds. As we go forward in the budget process, we will need to have some discussion in terms of which funds we draw upon first, particularly for the feasibility study. I'm in the interest of time, I won't get into that tonight, but we'll just need to talk about that, because the timing and the source of the funding has certain consequences associated with it, and we'll just need to kind of work through with the council which source of funding you see being used for that feasibility study. As a reminder, what's currently in my proposed budget is program open space funds, so that'll be initially, we can talk about later during the budget process. I did want to let the council know, we have executed a contract for the Borings work. Our original intention was to just execute a contract with ECS, which is ultimately what we did, but on the advice of the city attorney's office, they felt that the procurement code did require the staff to do some research and to get some additional quotations from other firms. And that did take a little bit of time, but we have executed that contract with ECS, and I'll be updating the council once I have a firm schedule for when they will be on site. Unrelated to the community center project, I promise I'll keep this quick. Several weeks ago, the council had talked about retaining a consultant for the Park Avenue parking lot. I did want to let the council know that it does appear that we will be successful in negotiating an agreement with Lardner Klein that will keep us from having to go out and get proposals. I did send an email earlier this evening to the residents on Park Avenue and to let them know that's the status of it. I expect to have a final proposal in hand from Lardner Klein later this week, and I will forward that to the residents as I had committed to doing. The last item is Councilmember Barry had mentioned the New Hampshire Avenue tour on May 5th. We have heard from several council members who have sort of RSVP'd, if you will. If you have not done so and you do plan to attend, if you could please just zip off a quick email to me so that I know that we're in the process of trying to work with ride-on to get a bus so that it's a little bit more comfortable for our invited guests, and we just need to have a fairly good sense of the head count. So that concludes my report, unless there's any questions from the council.
Are there any questions for the city manager? All right.
May I have a seat?
We, we will move to the first item on our regular meeting agenda, which is the second reading of an ordinance authorizing the transfer of land to the county for the fire department. We had postponed this four weeks ago pending the receipt of some additional information, and I guess the first question we need to ask is whether we have that information at this point.
Hot off the first.
And if so, what it says, I guess.
Yeah, today at about quarter to two, I received a fax from Montgomery County that included some sketches of streetscape and sidewalk placement in the front of the fire station, which was one of the issues of most concern for the residents that live around the facility and attended the March 22nd meeting with the county. I also got a more, it's a, it's a hand-drawn sketch. It hasn't been formalized in any way, but I've been assured by the county staff that it has received the approval of the Department of Fire and Rescue Service. It is not 100% of what the residents had asked for. The residents at the meeting in, in March had asked for the sidewalk to be five feet away from the curb line throughout the area of the fire station construction to move pedestrians away from the street of particular concern, especially around the intersection where cars oftentimes cut into the apron of the fire department to go around other cars or to make a turn. They were able to, to achieve, I would say, two-thirds of that. From my own point of view, I think they've gone a, a long way to improve the safety, pedestrian safety, and the streetscape and aesthetics of, of the design. They've moved the sidewalk in five feet up until you get to the driveway apron of the fire station. So that's across the parking lot, across the front part of the station, into the, the bay area of the fire station. The bay apron itself is going to all be concrete, so where a person chooses to walk, that very much to do with how that person decides to walk. There isn't anything that's going to say you can't walk further up on the apron. The fire department does not want to invite and encourage people to walk closer to the bay doors. They would like people to stay a, a space away, and Steve could probably speak to that issue better. Beyond the driveway apron, the sidewalk is designed to be along the curb where it is now. So basically, we would have a portion throughout most of the construct, uh, design area that would move the sidewalk in, and then it would go back out along the curb in the area now adjacent to Healy Surgeons and, you know, the, where the lot lines separate. I have emailed people that were at the meeting and, and spoke of concerns. I have not received any responses, but of course, I only have the opportunity to do that at 2:00 today, so I'm sure, you know, people are responding now. I've sent a couple of faxes out to people, but again, I don't have feedback from a historic Tacoma. I don't know if they're here tonight, you know, the Carroll Avenue Citizens Association. So I know that there, you know, people just haven't had a chance to respond, though I do think, my sense is that people will appreciate the effort that was made at the drawing, so.
I, I can speak to this just a, a bit. I did talk with a Carroll Avenue resident who you had faxed the materials to, and she had a chance to look at them, and it, it seems to me that things are heading in the right direction. What I would really like to see happen is for us to come up with a very brief, you know, description of what those drawings show, that we can get the community to agree to, and make sure that the county agrees to it, and then, once I have that sign off, I'd be very comfortable going ahead. be very comfortable going ahead with the second reading. But until then, I think we should delay it another four weeks. The second thing that I think could be happening and coming to fruition in those four weeks, I don't know if it could be done by that time or not, but I'd really like to see the agreement with the family, the Hivya family, that will be taking possession of 7133 Carroll, which is looking lovely. And I can't tell you what a dramatic change has come about on that house that, I didn't see it. I didn't think it was possible, but I'm really impressed with the workmanship and things are looking good there. But I want to see the family get some closure on ownership of that property, whatever the agreement is. I think that we should be at a point very soon where they've signed on the dotted line, the county has signed on the dotted line, and I think that should also be tackled in the next four weeks.
Terry, Bruce?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Do we have, I didn't see a copy in my place. Do we have a copy of this new design?
No, I didn't make any copies, I apologize. I mean, I'd be happy to circulate it to you now, but that's all I have.
It sounds like all of this is fairly last minute. Bruce?
Just two quick points. One, do you know if as part of the redesign at the front there, that State Highway or the county, I guess it would be, in terms of the control box for the light, whether that's going to be moved out of the sidewalk so we don't have that large impediment in the middle of the sidewalk?
The design, it keeps it where it is and moves the sidewalk on the fire station side of it, so basically it's going to.
So there won't be that problem?
It won't be in the middle of the sidewalk on the one side of the driveway apron.
Bruce, in the drawing, it has it exactly where it is now. It does not remedy the problem you're asking about. So that's what the proposal shows.
I don't know which utility box you're talking about. We have two areas where the current sidewalk is blocked by telephone poles, utility boxes. One is at the lot line. That one will still, nothing is moving in those. They will still be there and the sidewalk goes through there as it currently does, though they've widened it around there. And the other one, the sidewalk, is on the fire station side of that area, so they've allowed a wider passage around the, there are three different utility features that block the sidewalk currently.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about access and safety in terms of using that sidewalk, which is a very busy one and a very vulnerable spot, to be sure that.
Yeah, it's.
Even down to the difficulty of somebody who might be going through there when it's dark and literally walking right into it and knocking themselves out.
The current plan, again, as Councilmember Austin Lane says, it shows them there and it shows, you know, sort of where your sidewalk would be. It would be a significant improvement over the current situation.
The other thing I just wanted to do was to remind everyone that I know both Mr. Lamphier and the volunteers have been trying to make sure that there are no other impediments to everything moving forward in a timely fashion and that one of those remaining dangling pieces is the need to either find the legal papers or to go through the steps to create the legal papers for the city to sign the release for the agreement that would turn over the building, the land to the city as all of this goes forward. So the city has to step back and say, no, the land goes to the county for all this to happen. So I know that the city manager has asked the city attorney to look and nobody seems to be able to come up with it and we just don't want to get down to the last minute and go, oops, we haven't dealt with this.
Ms. Brithwaite and I have also discussed this issue and Darrell, please correct me if I'm wrong, but you thought some of this had been dealt with very early in the process, is what I recall. Is there any additional information you can share?
No, but Steve, thank.
Steve Lamphier, Montgomery County Fire Rescue, excuse me. I also recall discussing this issue in the past and it's been some time and I will also go back through what I have, but it has been a number of years since we last discussed it and we'll, on our end, we'll make sure that's taken care of also. That was a good reminder for us.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
I move the table for four weeks, the second.
Okay, well, actually.
I moved that.
Yeah, since it's not on the table, I don't know that this is, in order to formally table it, you have to move it and second it. So actually, I think what we're probably doing is expressing the sense of the council, we can certainly do a vote, that we would wish to put it off for a four-week period and bring it back at that time, at a time certain, okay?
And the reason I made that proposal is really because I don't want to see this postponed indefinitely. I think the four-week reminder was a good chance for us to come back to the issue, see what was resolved and what was yet to be resolved. And I want to make sure that we have that same reminder in four weeks. So I appreciate the mayor making that change and bringing it back to us at that time.
All right, since this is a vote of the council, I'm going to ask if there's any public comment on this before the council goes forward with the vote.
Are we voting?
I think.
I thought you determined we didn't need to.
Well, I was going to say, I was going to say, it's not a formal tabling motion, but there has been, there was a motion on the table to postpone it for four weeks and I think that we should vote on that motion just as.
Well, I'm not sure I got a second on my motion.
Okay, I believe it was, well, it was moved twice, so it doesn't matter which thing you voted. All those in favor of putting this off for a four-week period and bringing it back in four weeks, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it will come back in exactly four weeks.
May I ask a point of clarification? What we would like to bring back within the next four weeks is be back in front of the community again with our, with a.
I think that would be very helpful.
Sidewalk.
I think that would be extremely helpful. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, the next item up is the second reading of the proposed pilot agreement with Montgomery County partnership.
Second.
Okay, seconded. We have discussed this a couple times, are any additional council comments? Are there any public comments on this second reading? All right, since this is the second reading of the ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
Aye.
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 Boo.
Aye.
[laughing].
That is a agreement on the second reading of the ordinance.
He moved in the alphabet.
Yes, he moved around the alphabet.
Perhaps George is now signing the move, probably for whatever the alphabet.
The next item on the agenda is the second reading of the ordinance regarding speed humps on Sligo Mill Road.
Move the ordinance, seconded.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any additional council discussion? Bruce?
I have one question. I know any number of times when people have made requests to add speed humps to an area, I'm thinking of West Moreland Avenue a year or so ago up near the park, near Old Town, and actually, I thought in this case with Allegheny Avenue, that the thing that made a difference was whether the originating.
I don't know where in that. Yes.
Yes, but the thing that always determined whether we needed to do a new ordinance or whether we just needed to address the concern was how the ordinance had been written, whether it mentioned a certain number in a certain area. And my recollection is that generally, staff was happier dealing with these kinds of requests when the ordinance had been written without a particular number in it. I noticed that in the case of the ordinances tonight, that it mentions a particular number of speed humps in a particular area, which would forego any of that flexibility that I thought we liked to have. So why do we have numbers mentioned in these?
I'm not sure of the history of the number issue. I do know that there have been times in the past where it was more left open. I guess my own take on it, from my point of view, is I'd like to have enough interaction between the staff and the community, once it gets to the council level, that we're on the same page with the number. Because I would hate to have a situation where you pass an ordinance that was not definitive, the city puts in two and the residents really wanted three or they wanted one. I mean, I hope that by the time we get to the point before your certainly second reading, because my attempt with first reading was to say, the engineer went out, here's the number that he thinks should go here. So, community, if you think something different, you know, speak now. So I guess I'd be happiest with numbers defined, it makes it very clear. Now, the situation of Allegheny Avenue, interestingly enough, that ordinance, the old speed bump is not the current one.
Right.
It did say a specific number, so we couldn't just expand it because it was defined, but I guess it's more a preference for the council. As a staff, you know, we can go either way. I kind of like the clarity of a number.
It sounds like you're recommending that we go that way. I brought it up because I know it's been a differentiation in the past and my sense was that staff was happier dealing with some things when it wasn't mentioned. So if it's a change, I don't have a particular issue with going with it, but I wanted to recognize that that's what we're doing.
Okay, are there any other council comments? Are there any public comments on the ordinance regarding speed humps on Sligo Mill Road?
Yes, why?
Right there, right in front of you.
There you go. My name is Mr. Lovelace again, 7620 Maple Avenue. Yeah, when it comes to streets outside of our ward, I think we should also remember that other residents, as the city has through these areas. And I'd like to also recommend that you can keep the speed bumps at a safe height because there are speed bumps that I've noticed on Maple Avenue and other areas where you can just go up over there and it's like going down across the grand hanging and no way back, you know? You know, and it's really bad on my back, you know, because I go over some of them and guard my money, feel the fracture of my back. It's every so often, and it'd be great if we could pass an ordinance, like I said before, to protect our vertebrae. There are people 80 years old who have osteoporosis and me, I'm only 50 years old and I've got that bone eating condition, gangrene, and I'd like to, I can feel now for people who are, say, twice my age, which I never could before, and I'd like to also ask the council to have some feelings for people who are twice my age and who are my age in my condition. And maybe my problem with my back is now, that other table can benefit from it now if you can look at it, because I go over these speed bumps and sometimes it hurts like hell. And some one time, I thought I was going to go back to the hospital and, but luckily I didn't. But when you put in these new speed bumps, always try to take into account there are people who may not even live on that street. And I'm not against speed bumps and I also think, when it comes to speeders, maybe we should have an ordinance to take their car away from them and tell them, boy, they can stick their legs from now on, because the main thing is stopping the speeders. That's what we need to do. Stop the speeders and also take into account people's health. Because it's an awful joke when you go over those bumps, especially when I cannot see the bump coming. I cannot see it coming and it hurts. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Pass an ordinance to save our vertebrae.
We already do have a standard speed hump, which is more gradual than the speed humps that were installed on Maple Avenue. Those were installed under a special agreement with the residents of that street and are an exception to what we generally do now. Is there anyone else? All right, seeing no one, any other council comments? All right, this is on the speed humps on Sligo Mill Road. This is the second reading of the ordinance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Aye.
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 The ordinance on the Sligo Mill Road speed humps passes the second reading. The next one is the ordinance authorizing the addition of one additional speed hump on Allegheny.
Move the ordinance, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any additional comments on this one? Any public comments on this one? All right, seeing none. The council already devoted this. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Aye.
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 Okay, the ordinance passes, that ordinance also passes the second reading. The next item we're taking up is a resolution designating the Richard Dempsey Memorial Gallery.
Move it.
Do you want to just give us the very brief overview? This actually is not something that the council has discussed, so you might want to just.
Essentially, what you have before you this evening is a resolution which would reestablish the Richard Dempsey Memorial Gallery. If you recall, it used to be in the primary hallway of the original part of the community center proposing and we've worked with the TAG, the Tacoma Artist Guild, as well as the Arts and Humanities Commission to designate that hallway area that we've been using for exhibits as the new Richard Dempsey Memorial Gallery. It's the area where the For Women by Women Photography exhibit was, off the atrium.
Bruce? I don't want to interrupt if you were going to say more, but I got a question. As I read this, I thought, well, I think I know where you're talking about, but I'm not sure I know where you're talking about and I'd like to make sure that we're very specific about where we're talking about so that in the future, somebody doesn't come back to this and say, now, we have a, you know, whatever the thing might be in the future for somebody saying to put it in the Dempsey Gallery or not in the Dempsey Gallery and that it's very well defined and who looks back at this thing and goes, what were they talking about?
Which is why when we went through and looked at the floor plan, this particular hallway was identified, it's very specific. When you go in the main door off of Maple Avenue on the main floor of the building, as you kind of look over the atrium railing, there's that hallway immediately to your left with the double doors. It would start there, it would go around the corner where the art room is and then it would basically end where the utility pull-up door is. It's an area that can be clearly marked and also secured if that became an issue in the future.
If I can just recommend that we add a little bit of language to this so that it's clear and somebody doesn't have to go searching around in the future when people, when personnel changes and a question comes up that we can say, it starts at the double-door entrance from the atrium, proceeds down the hall to the art room, jogs 90 degrees right and continues to the end at the electrical.
So are you.
Door.
Are you moving the resolution with additional language that specifies exactly the hallway?
To make it somewhat simpler, if I may, I think perhaps a more simple description would be the hallway that connects the atrium of the community center to the computer learning center. So if, as you recall, once that connection is made, there will be a connection that goes through eventually.
But this will be more than one hallway connecting the two of them, because you can be able to go out the back and then down.
Not the atrium.
But that's not an interior, yeah, that's not, I think Councilmember Simmons is correct, that wouldn't be connecting the atrium to the computer learning center.
The other option we have too is just to attach a floor plan and reference it within the.
Something just to make it clear that somebody doesn't have to go searching for.
I understand.
My understanding is that you're moving it with a specification of exactly which gallery, which can be a drawing or it can be a description and you don't have a strong feeling about what that is.
I don't care whether it's words or a picture.
Okay, but you just want it specified.
But I gave the words, if people are happy with that, we can do that, we can attach the drawing, we can have both.
I think perhaps the drawing, if we could use the drawing as an exhibit and actually clearly delineate the location, if that's acceptable to the council.
That would probably be the clearest thing.
That's fine. So with the, so we're just saying that it will have.
So you want to therefore get results to reference it.
Reference the attached one. Do you want a second?
No.
Second?
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Any additional council comments? Is there any public comments? Okay.
So was that an amendment or was that an addition to the move?
My understanding.
I think it was a friendly amendment.
No.
No, it was moved with the changes.
No, my understanding is that Bruce moved it with the changes in it.
Okay.
All right, that's.
It's fine, there. That's fine.
Terry seconded it with the changes in it. Okay, all right. Is there any comment on this, public comment? All right, if there's none, the resolution is before the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution passes.
If I might add, I personally didn't know who Mr. Dempsey was. TAG was very helpful in terms of identifying the material for me, which we made copies for you and distributed earlier to the meeting. If you have an opportunity, I'd encourage you to read through it. He's a very fascinating man and well-regarded nationally as well as internationally.
It might be helpful to have a plaque in that hallway at some time.
Yeah, I think.
There's got to be something in there.
Okay, the consent agenda is in front of the council. The consent agenda is not up for discussion unless someone wishes to pull an item out. The consent agenda includes the. The consent agenda includes the adoption of the policy on council-sponsored exhibits, which has already been discussed. The resolution providing for three appointments to the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee, and the resolution appointing one representative to the Municipal Aggregation Organizing Committee. We can, in the future, make additional appointments if we wish. Does someone like to move the consent agenda?
Somebody.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The consent agenda passes. Does the council want to move on to the discussion of Hefner at this point, or to...
Yes.
Okay, all right. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of the rental policies for the Hefner Community
Obviously, Ms. Haidiven is here to answer any specific questions the council may have about the mechanics and any other associated matters with the rental. In the interest of times, I do know, obviously, we have to be out of this building at 10 o'clock. I think the staff memo basically outlines some concerns that we have. I would just suggest this to council, if you're forward discussing this issue, that you do look at this in what I believe it is, which is a broader policy issue. It doesn't just affect, I think, out of equity concerns, just one group. I think you need to look at the whole broad base of community groups in the city and who you're attempting to serve. And I would also suggest perhaps that you may not just want to focus on Hefner. There have been some comments earlier tonight, I think perfectly appropriate, about Hefner being a community resource. Likewise, I think there could be many residents in Councilmember Barry's ward who feel that the recreation center on New Hampshire Avenue may be a community resource for his ward. So I would just encourage you, as you kind of talk through this issue, that we don't just look narrowly at one specific group and just as one particular building, because I do think the consequences of the council's decision this evening are much broader than that. Ms. Haidiven, is there anything you wanted to say?
Is there council discussion? Mark.
I looked into what the county is doing on their recreation facilities and found that groups that, for example, regularly use the county facility at the end of Flower Avenue in East Silver Spring, the Girl Scouts, they pick up a key for the season, and they have access to the room for the season. And I know from other people who've used county facilities that if you needed the key to it, you might have picked up the key during the week, sometime before the day you were going to use it, and then you return the key. And I can't believe that our issues are any more serious in Hefner than the county's issues are for similar parks. And I think it's different for the city building, and I think it's arguably different for even the rec center on New Hampshire Avenue because of the number of things that are in there and that are vulnerable. But I think on the Hefner building, honestly, we don't treat it the way the county treats its rent facilities and let people pick up a key during the week, let regular groups, you know, the few groups that use it regularly, have a key for a season, have them pick down a deposit in the form of an uncashed check. If there's a problem, then we take, you know, any extra maintenance or stuff out of the check. But treat it the way the county treats. I just can't rationalize treating this building differently than the way the county treats its buildings. And I'd like then, since I don't think we'd have the person going up there to open and close the building, drop the fees on Hefner. The fees on Hefner are comparable to what you would normally do when you rented space inside the city building. I think in the long term, you know, if the keys are the problem, then we ought to look at changing the lock to a punch-coated lock, that you can change the combination on it once a week. And if a person gets a group rental, you say, this is the code for the week, and the people who have it for that event go up and use it, and then we change it or change it on a daily basis, whatever it takes to do. But, you know, if there's a point where we can swipe card it so that it's, you know, it's hooked into the computer system and the door is activated by swipe card, let's do that. I think there are a number of things we can do that deal with the issue of keys out there in the long run, but I think in the short run, if it's good enough for the county to be letting groups access buildings this way, I think we ought to let groups access it similarly.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
I would like to clarify, the county has 31 facilities like that. And so there's a, there are a lot more groups, obviously, but there are a lot more options for the groups. And they have a system where you have to pay $45 to get a permit, and they also, as you mentioned, there's a $150 deposit and also a key deposit. Now, the county has a very strict cancellation policy. They charge you $45 if you're going to cancel without a 30-day notice. We don't do any of that currently, and I think it's, we have to be careful in just picking and choosing certain aspects of certain jurisdictions' policies, because that's park and planning, the buildings that you're talking about. And like I said, they have, we have people cancel, and we don't really charge the group. So what seems to be a very cheap and reasonable arrangement can end up being very rigid and expensive if, you know, and it loses flexibility. So we can certainly look at that, but I do still personally have a concern with giving out keys for, you know, indefinite amount of time.
I may just add, I think I might be able to speak to this more than Ms. Haidiven. I can't comment on what another jurisdiction chooses to do or not to do. As I advised the council, I think by email some time ago, I spoke to our director of finance, who obviously is a CPA and a governmental, former governmental auditor, as well as my former finance director, who had the same qualifications. In both their opinions, they don't think that giving out keys is a good practice. Both of them independently felt that the city is running a very high risk, that it will get a deficient comment in its management letter this fall. We are in the process, as I think the council may be aware, of exploring a swipe card system. I'm currently awaiting pricing. From TRG, our IT department have been working with Thayer Electric. Apparently, some of the things about being able to activate cards remotely and shutting them down with times has some proprietary type of software, and there's a limited number of vendors who can do that. Thayer was encountering some difficulty, so we're also having TRG basically perhaps as a change order to the contract, you know, giving us some pricing. I'm still waiting on that, however. So I think that will probably be forthcoming in the next week to two weeks.
Bruce and then Joy.
Yeah, I, my recollection was that we were going to be moving toward the swipe card system for Hefner, and that I thought that became the solution that fixes a lot of the problems that go with handing out keys. And my sense was that that was going to, the timeframe for that was something potentially around the beginning of the fiscal year, July 1. That could be done, and so that we were just looking at a shorter-term solution. I'm not happy going to handing out keys to people. I think you can get into all kinds of liability issues with potentially bad things happening in that building and people wanting to know, well, how did somebody get in there to do that? And you go, well, you know, we've handed out X number of keys to people. We can't tell you how people got in there. I think it's much better to have that control over it and limit liability and limit the possibility for some bad things to happen. And I think it also makes it a lot easier to have the groups that do belong in there be able to have access, because those swipe cards can be set up so that if a citizens' association is going to be going in there on a regular basis, or a musical organization or anybody else, their card will work to get them in at the time they're supposed to be in. So we don't encounter all those difficulties.
I appreciate Councilmember Elrich and Williams advocating for the swipe card system. I really do think that solves our problem here. I'm eager to see that system put in place as soon as possible and would like the council to give the city manager the go-ahead tonight so that she can make sure that that is a request that's implemented as soon as possible. We have been waiting on pricing for quite a number of weeks now, and I would like to make sure that when she does get the information, that she has the authorization from us to add that to the current work that's being done. Until the swipe card system is in place, I'm happy to do the unlocking of Hefner, and I think that the city manager is looking after the city's resources in the responsible way. So, you know, I think we have a good system in place right now as a temporary measure, and I hope that we can get the swipe card system in place as soon as possible.
Okay, can I ask for clarification here? Is there disagreement with the notion of using the swipe cards? And I believe it was Barb, your recommendation initially, that the swipe cards be used to control Hefner over the long term, probably coming from you, Dever. Is there a problem, are there any problems with that being the best solution for the longer term?
I think it needs more if we were to go to that solution. I would be more comfortable with perhaps a security camera in the building, because we really have no way to monitor the space short of sending a staff member up there. Whereas at the community center, obviously, the staff closes a building, we clear the building, we see the condition of the room, and we are the last ones there. In this arrangement, we're lacking any oversight, visual or otherwise. And, you know, I'm not suggesting that we need audio in the security portion of it. I would be more comfortable having some way of knowing that the condition of the building, because that is one of the concerns, that, you know, we may not, we wouldn't get there till the next day, one of the public work staff perhaps. And, you know, people could say, well, we left, and we left it like this, and someone got in in the middle of the night, and, you know, I think it's just a better oversight.
Can I ask about that? How would you, I know in the community center, having, I believe, two cameras is a situation where I don't feel like that's overdoing it. I think, you know, we're controlling access with the security system. The cameras are there to facilitate that. At Hefner, it might be a little awkward to, you know, have a camera in that room, and is that what you're proposing? Or are you proposing something from outside of the building that would be aimed at the door?
Actually, both. I would recommend one outdoors, because there is a playground area. I can't...
Well, I may mention that the outside camera was actually more in the playground area. The council may not be aware, but there have been some acts of vandalism on the playground that was actually sort of unrelated, truthfully, to interior use of Hefner. It was just an issue as staff talked about the building. The chief had noted that there had been some acts of vandalism. It is a relatively isolated area, and actually thought that may just be beneficial from an overall security standpoint. I think the one issue even with cameras is that, obviously, with the community center, as the council may or may not recall, that there are staff people at the reception desk who, part of their responsibility is to actually, you know, those cameras rotate to basically look at the different monitors from time to time. I think one of the issues that we would just have to deal with is if there is, you know, a camera in Hefner, who's watching it? Is it just recorded, and you only go back? If there's an issue, I don't have all the answers to that. I would say as part of the pricing from TRG, because this issue had come up, it'll obviously be broken out like any kind of cost estimate, but we have asked for that pricing as well.
I would just like to add, there are more than two cameras in the community center built. There are several cameras. And again, it's really not meant to be intrusive. It's really just for monitoring. And that's happening now.
Okay, actually, I do remember why I had two in my head. It was because when we talked about the cost of the security system, I said it totaled two red light cameras. So I stand corrected. If you could find out more about the placement...
It's been like $200,000.
If you could find out more about the placement of the cameras and let us know about that issue, I think that it does deserve further discussion before we agree to a camera as part of this. I think the swipe card as the entry access is something that I could stand behind right now. I have no problem approving that, and I hope my council colleagues would agree that we want that to be put in place as soon as possible.
Terry, you may call in.
I feel like I'm in the middle of a nightmare, and this multi-headed monster is coming. I thought it just had one head in the beginning, and now I see, you know, this is a community, it's not a business. And we're talking about problems that we haven't had, and we've been giving out keys for years. And we're, now we're talking about security cameras. Are we talking about Spring Park and all these other parks too? We need up to, you know, some of the county parks, we've heard about crime problems, you have cameras monitoring the whole city. I mean, there haven't been these big, these big problems. Yeah, there's been some graffiti up at the playground at Hefner Park, as there have been other places around the city. I'm just, I'm puzzled what the problem is that we're trying to solve and why it takes keeping keys out of our residents' hands. It's not like we're going around and mailing these out like they used to do with credit cards and give them to everybody. We, we're, you know, there's selected groups, and they're selected based on the fact that they're regularly using the facility. And there are people that, there are groups that we know and groups that have established a relationship with the city government that we trust with a key. Now, maybe there could be some tightening of that to where we control who has the key. We have a form sign so that they know what their responsibilities are with the key, so they don't go in and use it for their own private birthday party and feel like it's an extension of their house. But, you know, maybe there's a deposit, maybe there's rules that they have to follow, and maybe there's taking the key away from a group that abuses the privilege. They don't clean up the facility, or if they show that they abuse the privilege of having the key. If there's a fear that they're not going to return the key, and we want to have a return policy where they pick it up before and return it, you know, you can have deposits, you could require, they leave their kids with you or something, so that they come back and bring the key back.
You have to open the bargain.
Yeah, or they might keep the key and think it's a good deal.
Give us the hostage.
You know, and we're worried about what the auditors say, and I would just say that if the auditors are going to start looking at the policies and procedures outside of our financial department, that there are many other policies and procedures they need to look at. I would think that auditors have to look at the county procedures and seem to have some level of comfort if they're doing that at 30-some facilities. Again, I see that, yes, there is a potential for some problem, but we have many years of experience to show that those problems, you know, we have some trusted people in this community that we can, that things have been going well. I appreciate that we look at protecting our assets, but I don't think we need the overkill. And I made an abbreviated form of this speech when we talked about buying security cameras for the community center. You know, we've got a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of security cameras around that community center because of possible problems with, you know, kids doing things in the rooms that we didn't want them doing. You know, I just think we need to pull back and look at the fact this is a community, it's not, it's not a bank or a business we're trying to protect. And we're trying to make it usable for the community. And charging, you know, $20 an hour for a community band or for neighborhood associations or for the Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts at a facility just because you need somebody to come unlock the door and lock the door and make sure that they swept it up, doesn't seem very community to me.
I would like to add, in the county facilities, they do not allow live music.
Colleen?
Thank you.
Doesn't make any difference.
Well, that's what I'm just saying. We can pick, and we can, we can pick our, how we want to run our operation. But I'm just saying that there are many different things to look at. I don't know. I haven't heard the band, any of the bands. There are two bands rehearsing. I don't know, I have never had a complaint from a neighbor, but I haven't stood outside. This is why Park and Planning has the policy.
But that's not even remotely relevant.
Let's just let Colleen go.
Thank you. I think we exist as a city in large part because we want to do things better than the county does them. And so I don't think we should run to look to the way the county does things in this instant. I understand the audit issue, and I support the staff and the city manager and what they have to say about maintaining good audit records for good insurance. I don't want this to snowball into something that becomes much more expensive than it needs to be, because, you know, we don't pay attention to what's happening now. Key control is a big issue. I worked as a director in a large city recreation department, and I don't think it's a good idea to hand out keys. I think that if we can come up with a solution that is... I think that if we can come up with a solution that is swipe card based, I have also worked with swipe cards, and I think that they're very effective. Since we're not charging, the whole point of the swipe card issue is that we're not charging and therefore we want to have a no-charge way to let people into the Hefner Center, we might limit the swipe card groups just to those who are these groups that we've defined as no-charge groups because of their close relationship with the city and not people who are coming in from the community to, to make a rental, that we don't have a long-term ongoing relationship. And for, for those folks, since they're paying anyway for the use of the center, and I assume that included in that, we've figured in the cost of sending somebody out there to open it up and somebody come out and, and check back afterwards, then maybe one way to resolve that portion of it is to limit the swipe card to the free rentals groups close to the city. Also, I don't have an issue with the, the cameras. I do have an issue with something sort of a little bit separate from that, and that is coming up with a good definition or, or, or policy reason for why we're picking the groups that we're picking to use the facility for more than the 11 free rentals so that we have a narrow focus of what these groups are. It doesn't leave us open to every group coming after this and saying, this is, you know, well, we deserve a free rental too. And I, I think that we should have an ongoing discussion about that. You know, the, the thing that leaps out to me about these three groups is that they really exist for the sole purpose of promoting the city. Now, as a Girl Scout troop leader, I can say the, the Girl Scouts are certainly connected to the city and, and engage in activities where we promote the city at the Fourth of July and those sorts of things. But it's about a lot more than that. And really, at the core of these three activities, I think you see these groups that are representative of the city and almost sort of an adjunct, adjunct arm, if you will. And I would like to see us come up with some policy. And the other thing I'd like to say is that I think that having, after you've spent your 11 free rentals, to have to have one week in advance to determine if the space is available is problematic for all these folks who arrange their schedule. I have played in a, in a, in a community band, I played in my church band, and, you know, I drug my trombone down there, and for a while I drug my drum set down there, and it's a big deal to rearrange your schedules and to make those childcare swaps. And I really think that once we've determined that this is the core group that we're going to do this with, that we just determine what their, what the space is that they're going to have, and that just be their space every, whether it's Monday night or Wednesday night or whatever it is. If we can't make the swipe card deal work, I think we should find a space for the groups within the community center where it doesn't have a cost to us. And we need to find a way to find a room that's going to fit and work for those groups.
I think this discussion, Councilmember Clay, may, I believe, occurred before you were on the council. There were only, Debra, can correct me if I'm wrong, three specific groups that were named by the council that were entitled to more than 11 free rentals. Those were the Tacoma Park Community Band, the Tacoma Park Singers, and the Tacoma Park Swing Band. That had previously been defined by the council. Whether you wish to change that is obviously up to you. But those were the three groups that were entitled to have more than 11 free rentals, in my recollection, as that was based on the nature of the groups and just the past historical usage.
Can I make a suggestion in terms of getting through this discussion expeditiously? That we not reopen issues having to do with the use, with the cost of the space, that we sort of stick with the thing that we were going to talk about this evening? And it seems to me, based on what I've heard so far, that where the, there seems to be at least some degree of consensus is that the council is amenable to using a swipe card system to control, or should I say, the majority of the council is amenable to using a swipe card system to control access to the space. But I don't hear a majority behind the notion of cameras in that space for monitoring. Am I basically correct in that?
I don't think we've had that discussion.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to push it because I think if we're going to get to any discussion of rent stabilization, we're going to have to not sort of meander around in a usual fashion, but sort of come to a discussion a bit more quickly.
I, I would agree with your assessment. I also appreciated that Councilmember Clay went into the, the use policy. I think if the city manager could come back to us with a descriptive way of defining these groups, that does help limit it. So as a policy matter, it is somewhat clear. I think that's what you were saying, is that we had that discussion.
Yeah, I can basically get something out to the council. In your previous deliberations before Councilmember Clay joined the council, you actually already have defined those groups who are entitled to the free rentals, and I can send that out to you all, but barring any change from the council, that had been determined.
Okay, and then, once that issue is resolved, then the, the use of the rooms, I wouldn't think would incur any fee. The 11 free rentals would take care of the Ritchie Avenue Citizens Association, and then I think we need to put in place a system for the, the groups who use Hefner weekly to not have to go through hoops. There hasn't been a big demand on Hefner on Monday nights, so I think they're pretty safe from causing us any financial harm from it not being available for a, a group that might want to pay for its use. I'd like to see us have kind of the reverse of what we're doing now in place where the, the group is able to use it on a weekly basis, and then there's only discussion if there is an, an entity that must have it on that night, and then there can be discussion with the community band's director. But that's really on an as-needed basis instead of on a weekly basis.
I think that's a little bit different than when we decided, and again, I'll suggest that we not take up that policy this evening because I think we were going to be hard-pressed to sort of deal with the one item we have on the agenda for this evening and not open up something else. Terry.
Isn't that what's before us?
No, the issue is access. It's not, it's not cost. Right, no, we're talking about access. Right, go ahead, Terry.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I agree with your summary that you stated a minute ago, but with one additional thing, I would like to make sure that we have agreement that council members can continue to open the facility.
Well, I was going to deal with the short term. I'm trying to get that, sort of the longer term.
The long term I agree with. The short term, I, I think we need to address. And the other thing is, there's a number of members of the community band here and Ritchie Citizens Association. I had indicated to the members of Ritchie Citizens, they should be here just for this work session item, and I wonder if we could give them an opportunity to speak.
Well, what I'd like to do is I'd sort of like to get, as, as we tend to do, let the council sort of go through its deliberations, and then I would be very happy to hear from members of Ritchie Citizens Association who are here.
Thank you.
But if there's, if there's general sort of consensus in terms of the swipe cards being the, sort of the longer-term solution, then we can perhaps open it up. And I'm seeing nods, I'm not seeing any negatives.
I, I agree. All I wanted to do was say that I would like to encourage us to have a discussion in the future about the recommendation from staff about considering a camera or cameras.
Okay. Perhaps we can do that as part of the overall budget discussion. Would that be appropriate timing?
If I may pardon, the council moves off the topics. I think, actually-
Actually, we have the short-term issue we have to deal with.
Well, I think both the issue that Councilmember Austin Lane, I believe, was alluding to, and I know Councilmember Siemens is explicitly dealing with, has to do with this weekly scheduling. Because the prior council policy actually was that the groups would have to call. I believe the Tacoma Park Community Band is in that category where they're past 11, so that is an issue that we would need some direction on, so we're not violating what you previously decided.
Right, but my, my understanding, first of all, is that Ritchie Citizens Association does, if, if Hefner is treated as the other spaces are, they would have 11 free rentals, which probably would take care of Ritchie Citizens Association's needs. So we're only talking about the people who use it more than 11 times. And the previous decision, which if, I'm happy to take it up, but I don't think we have time to deal with it this evening, was that they would have it sort of on a space-available basis. And in most cases, I think for, for spaces that are not under a lot of demand for use, that's probably going to be fairly consistent from week to week. We can, we can take it up again, but that was sort of, that was not what we were talking about this evening.
I would, I would have to disagree that it's not what we were talking about, given that it is on our work session sheet. It, it does appear to be what we were talking about, and I want to make sure that we don't have to bring this back. Rent stabilization is something that we will be bringing back, and I would like to take care of the Hefner use policy at this time.
I don't think, quite frankly, that you're going to be able to resolve the others this evening.
What, what is there that is a point of contention?
What, what happened before, and I'm sure would happen again, is that if we said that three groups, and only three groups, got to use, got to reserve space for as much time as they wanted without charge, we already had other groups coming to the council and saying that they felt they should be included in that policy also, that they felt they should have unlimited free rentals without, you know, checking on a weekly basis. And I don't know where it is that we draw the line. I'm sure that there will be other groups coming to us, as they did before, and saying that they wanted to be included in that. And it's not at all clear to me that if the council says these three entities get it and other people do, then we'll have another group that comes to us and says, we're also a worthwhile, community, city-sponsored organization, we would like to say arrange.
Couldn't we have the discussion at that time?
Yeah, I think you have to set a policy. You can't sort of set it on an ad hoc basis and sort of deal with each individual, each group as they come up. I saw Bruce, and then Mark, and then-
Can I, can I just ask staff if you could characterize the extent to which there's confusion over use policies or pay policies in terms of use of city facilities at this point in time?
Confusion by the staff?
By groups, by the public, by whoever is coming to you to, for dealing with these kinds of issues.
Well, my staff is confused.
I, I think, if I understand it, perhaps I can clarify, is I understand it, Hefner is being thought of as a special case because it requires, at this point, somebody to go down and open it and close it. And so the charges for Hefner, regardless of other policies for other space. And so if we were to say that Hefner gets treated like the other spaces, then I think we would eliminate most of the confusion. I think the problem is Hefner is treated differently at this point.
I would like to treat Hefner like the other spaces, but, I mean, I've already been approached by the Cub Scouts. And I, and so there's, there's one group already, and I'm sure there are others, and I'm sure there will be others. I mean, it's hard to, and once you let people know that the space is available, there are groups that can figure out ways of using it. And I think having a policy is what we need to have, because this council does not need to have, you know, trying to schedule a night-by-night agenda session, an agenda item on whichever group comes to us next for using, for using Hefner. So I think we need, we need to have a policy discussion about their uses. And I'd like to know, you know, your best guess, or your best guess about what the likely groups are. We must have known about the Cub Scouts before, but, you know, they weren't given access. Well, now, now they're asking that question. And, you know, you made a case for, you know, the value that these groups provide, and I think, you know, we could, we may be able to argue that for other groups. So I really want to have the policy discussion. I don't know whether tonight's the right night for that policy discussion, the way we're going, I don't know if it's the right night for the other policy discussion we're planning either. But, um-
I would just say-
We have to talk about the right, but I think the idea of treating it the same as other facilities, particularly once you get the swipe card, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I mean, I think the council, obviously, we had a series of discussions, you can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but at this point, we have a number of groups who are being treated in different fashions that is creating some ill will or I think has the potential to. I know there's already one group that has contacted the recreation department, doesn't like the community center space, is, quite frankly, feeling disadvantaged that other groups have been called out by the council and in their view given preferential treatment by getting more than 11. I don't know that that's a discussion you're going to be able to accomplish this evening, but I do think it would be something that would be very beneficial to everyone, including staff, to know what the underlying basis is. As I mentioned, the three groups that had been kind of called out before, the discussion last year really had to focus on their use of the community center. And if you may recall, we had given the council some statistics at your request in terms of who used the building, how many times, et cetera. Obviously, some of the data that we had, it may have been somewhat distorted because certainly a number of groups were displaced because of the construction. So whether or not that provided a clear picture in retrospect, you know, it may not have. But I do think in order for us to be able to be able to answer questions from various groups who are asking, why the band, why not me, is something that I think would be helpful for you to halt that discussion and to have a more set basis, whatever that might be, so at least we're better able to respond to questions that are being posed.
Well, I thought when we, when we put off the discussion about the fees, again, we sort of revisited now.
Yes.
But the assumption was that we didn't understand exactly what was going to happen with the buildings.
Right. You're scheduled to revisit, have that policy discussion this summer.
And I think it's also fair to discuss this other policy, because we also didn't have this much space, and we didn't know what was going to happen with the buildings. So I don't feel bound by our previous decisions in the sense that somehow we made some sacred decision we shouldn't revisit, and I think we ought to revisit what we did, and probably sooner than later. But, you know, I hope that, and that we can think of a way of also having some kind of judgment being used, because it's going to be impossible to draw guidelines that fit everything, but don't wind up having something that somebody can say, well, this makes sense, but it doesn't fit your guidelines. And there's got to be some way for common sense to operate without having the council cast a resolution. Somehow, our resolutions aren't always in body common sense, and we just should not get away.
Colleen?
I was actually at the meeting where the council talked about what groups were going to get to have access. And at that time, I thought what was missing was a definition of why those groups and not the other groups. I think, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that we weren't going to talk about all these, or I wouldn't have brought it up. But it says, discussion of Hefner Park Community Center rental property, or policies. But now that we're into it, I think that the very issue that you brought up about how people will come to us, one group at a time, and say, hey, but what about me, is why we need to have a very tight ring around the groups that we selected and say, you know, why did we select these and not any others, so that we don't have every single group coming to us? Because, you know, if we get to a point where we let, and I'll, I'll use the Girl Scouts instead of the Cub Scouts, since this is my group, if we let every Girl Scout group come and have free access to the community center, it would be great. I mean, it would be a lot easier for me. I wouldn't have to walk them up to the very generous Presbyterian church that lets us have space for free. But there could be maybe as many as 12 Girl Scout troops in Tacoma Park, and they could meet every week for an hour. And if they all meet every week for an hour, and they're all, that's 12 hours of rental space. I don't know how many rooms we have, seven rooms that we can rent or something. That's a tremendous amount of rental space for a building that, as I understand it, is partially being paid for on rental fees. That's only one group, just the Girl Scouts. We could easily consume every available rental hour with these groups if we don't have an extremely tight ring around the groups that we're willing to let have this ongoing benefit. And that's why I suggested that we limit it to groups who really exist for the, for the sole purpose of promoting the city. And that's all I'll say about it.
Let me again say, my understanding, when I scheduled the work session, was that we were going to deal this evening with issues that were specific to Hefner Park. We are scheduled this summer, and it will be sooner rather than later, I anticipate we'll probably do it soon after we finish the budget, that we will take up the whole issue of rental policies and who gets included is what. I think what we need to decide this evening, because it has become an issue, is how is Hefner, specifically Hefner, treated? And I think the overall policies, to the extent that they apply to Hefner, we don't need to get into this evening, although we will revisit them, but I think the issue is that Hefner has been treated differently. The rationale is that it costs money to open and close Hefner, and so the question that I think is before us is, how do we specifically want to address Hefner, not necessarily our overall rental policies? And it seems to me, what I'm hearing as a solution, is that if, for the long term, we go to a swipe card system, then it wouldn't necessarily cost more to deal with Hefner. And then we could apply, if I'm understanding what Debra said, we could apply the overall rental policies that we applied to get the other space to Hefner also, if we could control access through a way that the staff felt comfortable with that didn't involve giving out keys. And that would be the long-term solution. In terms of the short-term solution, between now and whenever the swipe card system gets put in place, we need to come up with a way of doing something that is, makes it accessible to the people who need to get there, but isn't, doesn't, I, I would also, I have to say, share the concern about giving out keys in the old space that we had. There seemed to be a lot of people who had access to spaces, and I think that over the years, what happens is people sort of accumulate whatever it was that we were using for access to some of those spaces. So I do think that we have to do something. I don't think that we have to go overboard, but I think we need to be responsible, not just in terms of protecting the property, but also in terms of protecting people. You don't want- You don't want to have, you know, people put in a dangerous situation because there's basically unlimited access to all of these city buildings. So, if the council is agreeable to the notion that what we will deal with tonight is the case of Hefner specifically, and that we will try and deal with that over the longer term by having a swipe card system at Hefner, similar to what we're trying to get in other rooms in the municipal building, that we wouldn't then have to treat Hefner as a different case that could be treated as a case space similar to the other spaces that we have. If people are comfortable with that, then the only thing that we would need to do is figure out, what do we do between now and whenever the swipe card system gets put in place to maintain some sense of security for people as well as property, but without unduly inhibiting access? Derek?
I agree with you, Mayor Porter, and I would just like to suggest that as a short-term solution, until the swipe card system is installed, that council members on a voluntary basis be allowed to take the responsibility of opening and ensuring that the facility is cleaned and closed at the end of events for any organizations that they choose to take that burden on.
And then if the building gets trashed, and the council members opened it, then you have to pass the taxes that are needed to clean it up?
Yeah, I'd just point out that, you know, again, we're solving a problem that hasn't happened. There's been frequently, when we've gone to meetings at Hefner Park, both Ritchie Citizens' meetings and other meetings that I've attended, Boy Scouts and other organizations, and I walk around and look, you know, the windows are unlocked. You know, anybody could have crawled through a window and gone in anytime they wanted to, but I don't think we've had serious vandalism problems inside that building. You know, again, I appreciate the fact that we're trying to protect the assets, but again, I don't think we need to be scared about our security.
In terms of a short-term solution, is having one or two council members have keys, and then be responsible for both opening the building and then securing it and checking the condition of it after people have used it, is that, do you think that's a suitable short-term solution?
So, giving, actually giving them keys, not having them designed?
I think what has worked well with Councilmember Austin Lane is she just returned it. We have a key.
If I could just say one thing, I am happy with the short-term solution, and I can tell you what it is. I go and pick up the key at 7:10 at the community center. I go and unlock Hefner at 7:15. I then bring the key to the council meeting, so I have very little inconvenience. What I do think needs to be addressed tonight, Mayor Porter, is the aggravation that we might be putting groups through in order to continue using Hefner as they have done in the past. I don't see a huge run on Hefner on Monday nights. I do want this council to let the city manager and the Recreation Department director know that we need a sensible policy right now. It can't wait.
Well, if the council wants to debate the whole usage of all the community center spaces this evening...
That's not what was advertised, so that actually would be off the agenda.
No.
What is on the agenda tonight is how this group has to make reservations to the use of space.
Joy, I set the agenda. I know what's on the agenda. What's on the agenda is the fact that Hefner is being treated differently than the other spaces. That was a concern that has been brought up. That's what I wanted to try and deal with. I think we are 99% of the way toward dealing with that. I think we have dealt with the specific Hefner issue. The whole issue of how all community center spaces, including Hefner, are given out to groups, and who pays for what and for how many, that's an issue that is going to be dealt with when we deal with the whole, all of the policies later this summer.
I'm sorry, Mayor Porter. Here, on this blue sheet, it says, "It was further agreed on October 10, 2005, that the three groups should contact the Recreation Department..."
Right.
"...one week in advance to determine if space were available."
Right.
This needs to be resolved tonight.
That, as far as I'm concerned, that's the way it stands, and it will stand until the council changes the policies across all of the community center spaces.
We're only talking about these three groups.
And Hefner Park. It says, "Hefner Park Community Center rental policies."
But that's not, that particular policy was established for all community center spaces, not just for Hefner.
We're only talking about these three groups.
Right, I understand that, but that was across all community center spaces. It was not just for Hefner.
Okay, so you're saying that between now and July, that the community ban needs to call on a weekly basis...
Mm-hmm.
...and add to the workload of our Recreation Department, just for some unknown reason that I'm really not clear on?
I'm suggesting that if the council wishes in the next 15 minutes to totally rewrite the access rules for all community center spaces, we could do that, but it hasn't been advertised, and that isn't what I intended to put on the agenda. I intended to put on the agenda specifically the use of Hefner, as Hefner differs from the use of other community center space.
Yes, but what has been put before us by the city manager...
Joy, there's information, there's information on the blue sheet. That's information for members of the public, it's information for...
It is actually information our city manager has requested of us tonight. She has asked for direction on this point.
I don't believe she has.
I think...
There you go, you're in the middle now.
Yeah, that's... No, I'm just saying, barring any change in policy by this council, staff is obligated to follow your prior direction.
Yes.
I mean, I think that's a fair assessment of the situation. So, I mean, it's really up to the council to make this decision. You know, if I may, I mean, kind of what I'm trying to hear in an effort to kind of wrap it up, there are, and Debra can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the three various musical groups, one meets Monday night...
One is Friday.
Okay.
And the other was Tuesday. And, you know, I would like to add that there are other groups, as you have indicated, that are asking, "What about us?", and that would not be weekly. So, what we're setting up is a system where the building is basically used almost every night of the week. And I just want to say one thing, and some members of the council have tried to get space in the community center and in the main building, and it's getting harder and harder to find a place for everybody. And, you know, the council does have the authority to bump somebody, you know. It's, if we're not exactly there, but we're getting there.
Okay, so my, unless there's disagreement on the council, I think, since we have only barely 10 minutes left, I think what we need to do is wrap this discussion up. My understanding of where we are is that the general space issues, we will leave where they are until we get to the general space discussion. Specifically for Hefner, the swipe card issue will take care of, on the long term, it will take care of the issues specifically dealing with Hefner, and there would not be an additional charge for Hefner in the long term. And in the short term, the council members who wish to can get a key and open up the space. What I would like to do, since we did advertise that we were going to talk about the rent stabilization, I would like to at least lay out the, we're not going to have a chance to talk about very much this evening, I would like to, as long as we've got people here though, lay out a little bit for the next discussion that we have, which will probably have to be a more in-depth discussion.
Before you move on to that, I wonder if members of Ritchie Citizens Association would at least be extended courtesy of...
Okay, all right, all right. Are there members of the Ritchie Citizens Association that would like to speak to this issue?
Hi, I'm Susan Wood, and I'm Secretary of Ritchie Citizens, and we have a number of others. Not on?
Yeah, am I on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Susan Wood, I'm Secretary of Ritchie Citizens, and there are a number of members of the Ritchie Citizens Association who are here.
Thank you all for coming.
I think Terry has expressed our concerns well. I mean, we found out that there's going to be an additional charge, and we couldn't get the room, or we could come over here to have our meetings, which would be devastating to have to actually shift those who come to our meetings. And so having it available and available for free in the short term and in the long term is really important to Ritchie Citizens. We haven't seen, and I live directly across the street and do hear music when it's practice, and enjoy it, but it's important that we have, we have a long history with that building and with that space and with that park, and the Ritchie Citizens Association feels very strongly that continued access is important for us as well as for others, but we're here on behalf of ourselves right now. And that we haven't seen issues of security or cleaning up after ourselves, or getting in or getting out. It is, there have been essentially no problems, and we're willing to commit to ensuring that as far as Ritchie Citizens is concerned, there will still be no problems in the future. But, anybody else want to make a call? Yep.
And I would just, Susan makes another good point, which is that most of the members of Ritchie Citizens Association do walk to the meetings, which would be a hardship on them to have to go to the community center.
Hi, I'm Belle Ziegler, and I'm here on behalf of the community band and also Hefner period. I don't know if you folks know the history of Hefner. I was told this by Lee Jordan and Mayor Miller, that where Public Works is now was a playground for the community, for the Hefner Park community. And also, someone donated a house for, to Lee, for the community, the Hefner community. Lee paid for having that house moved over there for their community center. And when the city decided to take the area and build Public Works, the mayor and council at that time promised the community that they would build them a new community center and a playground, which of course, they have now, but much, much smaller. And this is something that the mayor and council promised, and I'm sure it's in the minutes, if they go back and look at the time Public Works was built. I can't remember, it was before I think I moved here. I moved here in '56, and it may have been a little after I moved here, I'm not sure. And the community band was sponsored in the beginning by the rec department, Dale Music, the junior high under Mr. Klandis, and some community group, which I can't remember. That was in '75, in the late '70s, the mayor and council, at the request of the director, sponsored the group entirely, so that it was under the sponsorship of the city. It was never after that a group that sponsored them, it was the mayor and council. And I felt personally that it was not fair to the band, they don't get donations from the city, they get donations occasionally from a community if they're playing their concert for them. But I don't know that the city, unless they've done it in recent years, have ever given them a donation. They have to raise their own money for their music and any expenses that they have. So, it's, the band itself is there for the community and have always been there. They've played for the Fourth of July for I don't know how many years now, Jean probably could tell you how many years it's been. And no one, the committee hasn't had the money to give them a donation, and no one else has. So, I just wanted to put my two cents' worth in for the band and for the community. I think, over the years, when I was in the rec, that the scouts, the Brownies, anyone, and I think the Boys and Girls Club, and of course, the Ritchie Citizens Association, never had to pay a fee. Others, if they wanted, in the community, if they wanted a private party or anything, they had to pay a fee, plus a down payment for the key, and then they picked up the key the day before or that day, and then returned it the next day. But the building was inspected to, either by Public Works or the rec department, to make sure everything was in order. If it was, they got their deposit back when they brought the key back. And maybe it wasn't the next day, but within a couple of days, the key had to be brought back. So, that's all I had to say, but I figured a lot of you didn't know the background, and that's what I was told as far as Hefner was concerned. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's very useful to know, and we very much appreciate having all that background that you're aware of that probably many people are not. Thank you.
In the interest of time, I'm not going to encourage anyone else to get up and speak. I did just want to mention that I know Norm Ridgway had raised the issue that up until a year ago, Ritchie Citizens Association was always able to clean the facility very well before they, at the end of a meeting, before they locked the facility. But about a year ago, the room closet was locked, had a padlock on it, so there's no longer a room or dustpan available for sweeping up the floor.
That's a good point also. I'd just like to take, we only have about five minutes left, and just in terms of setting up the next discussion of rent stabilization, we touched very briefly, and, thank you, Debra, I appreciate it, we touched very briefly on a large number of items the last time we went through, and it seemed to me, in the discussion, the very abbreviated discussion that we had, that the capital improvement petitions generated a lot more questions than we had answers. And so I think it might be worthwhile, in terms of dividing up our discussion, to discuss the capital improvement petitions and related issues as one discussion, and then put the other things into another discussion. And I would ask the members of the Housing Department who are here, whether, if not, you don't have to tell me right now, but in terms of setting up the two discussions, think about how we can divide that up, because there were a number of issues that were brought up on, related to capital improvement petitions in that discussion, and I think that may deserve a whole discussion by itself. And that might be helpful in terms of our thinking, how to structure the next couple of discussions, because I think it's going to have to be more than one. Did you want to say something, Sarah?
Thank you. To that end, it would be very helpful if council members could email us with their specific issues or concerns regarding capital improvements. That way we can narrow the information that we pulled together for you, and it might be a more productive discussion.
Okay. One thing that Councilmember Williams already put on the table implicitly, was he listed a number of things that are included in the capital improvement petition, and I'm assuming that what, the point he was trying to make was that we should rethink the things that are included, that are permissible as capital improvements and that are not.
If we're going to continue to do that, those items, to...
And those are the types of questions or concerns that, if you could email me, will be, we'll do our best to pull together the information.
And our apologies to the members of the housing staff who ended up being here all evening and not having a chance to participate in the discussion. Normally, we would go on with that item, but we do have to get out of this room in order to let the cable people break down the equipment and get out by the time the school wants us to get out. Are there, is there other items, that anything, anything else anyone would like to put on the table in terms of the rent stabilization discussion? Okay, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.
Just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight.